Facilitate.
Yeah, Sean, it looked like it was starting out with finance, so I was letting you roll with it and run with it. Yeah.
All right, well.
Yeah, Chris, there's not much on the agenda itself for finance related. We can update you a little bit about like, you know, securing the monies. But really, consideration of accounts is all you, Chris, and then Rob. I think, you know, we make it easy and give it to Chris Gloubitz, so.
Emily, do we have anybody for public comment?
Hi, Chris, it's Tricia.
Hi, Tricia, sorry.
That's okay. I don't see anyone raising their hand or in the chat.
A quick, a quick board response to a non-public comment, but thank you, Tricia, for all your, all your work and, and pulling off a very successful election post what we had to do last year than trying to return to 16 different, I think, polling spots, 16, right? So, Tricia, it's a great job again, and just really appreciate it. And, and we'll get through tonight, so you can take a break.
Thanks, Rob, it's a team effort, so I can't take 100% credit, but thank you.
I have to second that, and I hopefully we can get through this and get all of you home at a decent hour, so you can get some rest and relaxation.
So, that being said, go ahead, Chris, we'll jump in.
So hopefully everyone looked at the consideration of accounts. We've got discovery, discovery trail, $43,000, IPA funds. We've got the treasurer's report, transfer of funds. The one thing I wanted to speak to was 3.6, was the transfer of funds for 183,000, capital reserve fund, CR18, resulting in new capital reserves, so basically, and Amanda, I'm gonna basically fudge this all up, but we didn't use the total funds from the previous year, which left money, so we moved it this year, correct?
Yeah, I can speak to that, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Yes, there were actually several older capital reserves from prior years that had gotten approved to be spent and got moved over to the capital fund. Technically, the capital reserve is a reserve in the general fund. When the money's approved to be spent, it gets moved over to capital, and that's where it gets expended. And we had some money left over there that had gotten spent, and so technically, the right thing to do per the auditors is to, through the board action, move it back into the capital reserve and the general fund. So that's, that's what this is doing, so it adds, it makes us a little closer to our $5 million cap for funding the CR18, and I think it says that there's just a small amount, I think 171.
Yeah.
Right, left to, I'm sorry, to, to fund that CR18, and so that's why I think, I think the plan is still to next year create a new capital reserve.
Thank you. And hopefully everyone saw it, but a note for 3.7 with the food service report and just the discrepancies due to the shutdown last year. So the numbers, when you look at the numbers, if you're looking at last year's numbers, that's when we experienced the shutdown, so food service numbers are not there, basically. So, so there's some identified markers, and just reminding everyone that each of the categories in the consent agenda all have descriptors in there for the public and also for all of us. Any questions, comments? All right, I'll jump right to discussion item 4.1 in Phase 1 of Campus Construction.
Thanks, Chris, and Amanda, and, and the other Chris. Take it away.
Chris, you want me to go ahead and give our Phase 1 update?
There you go, thanks, Cindy.
You're welcome. Good evening, everyone, I understand it's been a grueling day and a half up to this point. You know, just, just in the last 24, 48 hours, not to mention what it's taken to get you to the vote last night. So, well done and well deserved passing of that. So, our update for this month for facilities, starting with Bel Sherman Annex. We are still needing to install a new fire alarm announcator, and we're looking at doing that probably after school is out at this point. We also have a hardware replacement piece that needs to be installed in the same area, and the principal has asked us to do that once school is out, so we'll schedule both of those pieces of work to be done then. At transportation, we do have a change to reinstall an existing heater in lieu of installing some contract heaters that did not fit the space. And we are currently working with the trades to get that work scheduled. We're out of the heating season, so no real priority or, or critical need for that at this point. So we'll do that as soon as it's possible and stay out of the transportation staff's way with summer coming and their inspection schedule. At the stadium, the site contractor did remobilize last Monday, May 10. They are preparing to pave some smaller areas that they didn't get a chance to do last fall tomorrow, and this is all in preparation for the surfacing subcontractor to start next Monday. They have about a three-week duration for installation and curing. And then, after the July 4th holiday, they'll be back to stripe the lines on the track surface. At the high school, the east doors, the ones that face Building C were installed over April break, as we reported. There is some glazing that needs to be installed above those doors, just some solid panes. The contractor has them on hand, and we're looking to schedule that on a day when students are not in the building. Area C, the east wall of the pool has been built out. We were given direction to have that work done, and that's been completed. We did find some additional areas of hollow sounding spaces on the north and south wall when the walls were sounded last. Those areas have been removed and reinstallations are pending. Tile installation on the deck is approximately 80 to 85% complete. What is not installed is left out purposefully for access to the pool walls and that work that needs to be completed. Upcoming work for this summer, we have work at Boynton, we have work at York Hall at the high school, and we have some secure vestibules to be done at three of the elementary schools. So that work is scheduled to start as soon as school is out. Abatement at Boynton will follow abatement at one of the elementary schools and at Northeast, and then they'll move through the other schools in a orderly fashion with demolition and reinstallation of those vestibule components and/or glazing, and then floor replacement at Boynton. The site contractor will be demobilizing for a little bit. The remaining work they have after they finish up what's left in the stadium is the baseball field. And really what we're doing is we're putting in new drainage in the outfield and tearing that up to do so, and we're putting sod back down. There's certain windows that sod should go down so that it has an opportunity to get established in the right temperature and climate. So, looking at that and how wet that space out there can be, because it's low lying, the contractor is gonna wait to return to do that work towards the end of July with a four-week duration to get the piping in and grading ready and fine grading done in preparation for the sod to be laid in late August or early September. And this will complete their work. The area K or York Hall work that will continue out through the end of December with a closeout early next year of all contracts in Phase 1. Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
So I guess I will start my piece of this, and yes, congratulations on your successful votes yesterday. I'd like to share my screen, and which I'll do in just a moment. I'm gonna talk about basically three kinds of things. One is some trends that we were looking at in education as far as just things that, that are sort of out there in the marketplace and ideas that we wanna have in mind for our planning for Phase 3. I'll do a very quick review of current projects, what's, what's underway, and then get to a discussion on Phase 3 and some of the ideas that, that we're starting to talk about. We had a conversation at the OACM meeting last, last week that we want to continue. So with that. Hopefully you can see my screen now. Thanks, so. To start off with the trends, things that we're, we're seeing in the marketplace. Ask me to kind of look around and update him and the executive team about what's out there in the world. And, and in thinking about this, really the trends in school design, school facility design, follow what's happening in, in our culture, in, in society. Schools are a huge piece of it, right? And, and what we're struggling with plays out in our school buildings across the country. So, some of those big issues, you know, technology obviously is continuing to change, continuing to affect how we live and work and learn. Health is something that people more and more are focusing on, and what can we do in schools to improve the, the well-being of the occupants? Similar to that is, is the environment, which is, health and environment are often very closely related, and our buildings have a huge impact on the environment, so there are opportunities to improve the footprint of Ithaca City School District while improving the health of its occupants. And social structures is a, you know, a broad kind of piece, but as we know in the, in this pandemic, our social structures and orders have been, have been shifted, and as you have been welcoming students back into your schools, are there some things or some ideas that we can, we can investigate to really welcome the students back to the communities that they have not really been as much of, or they've been a part of in a very different way, you know, not in a facility, they've been largely separated, so. Technology, obviously, you know, there's a progression that continues, right? We've got whiteboards, mark, you know, working on, on other kinds of boards now, you know, with, with Wi-Fi and other things, we can work pretty much anywhere, so a lot of spaces can become learning spaces in a building that weren't before, and what's next? As far as health, we talked about, you know, a few things. Social emotional learning is something that's been on the minds of school administrators that, that we work with across New York State. And what can we do to help that lighting is a thing that we can, we can, a tool we can use, acoustics, this notion of biophilia, which we'll talk about in a moment, and air quality, obviously very hot topic these days. There's definitely improvements that can be made, air quality. Touch on this well, health and safety rating and talk about teaching spaces. So, we're talking about lighting, acoustics, other things that we can do in spaces to help especially students that are neurodiverse and that immediate switching off of all the lights, you know, can be triggering, for example. So, so just looking at techniques for removing barriers to learning for students. Biophilia speaks to our innate, as humans, our innate connection to nature and how you can design, you know, little interventions, little, little things in your buildings to, to, you know, touch on that and provide some, some connection to nature. And if you have many schools that have a great potential for that, due to their settings and being able to open up outside. The well, health and safety rating is a relatively new offering in the, in the marketplace of accreditation, if you will, you know, we've talked about LEED, we've talked about a lot of standards that are out there, and WELD has come out with one somewhat in response to the pandemic that speaks to operations and maintenance primarily, focusing on certain areas that, you know, that can, that can address wellness for occupants specific to issues that came out of the COVID-19 pandemic. Outdoor teaching spaces, right? We, we, we were doing this back in, since 1911 on that one, right? So, and, and I want to say, your teachers are incredibly creative and resilient and responsive, right? So we've got, we've got logs in front of trees, and teachers are teaching outside in a lot of different ways. There are a lot of ways to do that, right? So, from more formal to less formal, the auditor, via, sorry, the like theater-like settings outside and a lot of other ways to do that. So, how can, how can that be worked in sort of long-term? In the environment, a lot of, people are talking about beneficial electrification. It's electricity can be generated in a lot of very clean ways as opposed to fossil fuel use. One of the things that we'll see in Phase 2 is a geothermal well field out at Enfield Elementary School that uses a heat pump technology, so it's electric-based, and, you know, you're gonna take a huge step to decarbonizing that campus when that work is done. Social structure, so breaking down the classroom is something that we've talked about with some different, different teachers and superintendents. Obviously, the project-based learning mode of, of teaching is something that a lot of people are doing more and more. Breaking down the, the teaching wall and allowing the whole room, all the different surfaces to, to be used for teaching, hallways, differentiated spaces, which we'll show you an example of. To think about classrooms as a suite of spaces, right? And then some of these communal spaces that can be, can be transformed and looked at in a different way. So, collaborative project-based learning, we think of, of shop spaces. There's a new space in, in Area J at the high school, you know, that has some that, you know, was recently completed, that has, you know, power coming from the ceiling and a lot of flexibility, to be able to structure the room in different ways to support, you know, a lot, a lot of different kinds of projects. There's a saying, a little bit of, of gas in there for, for scientific experiments and a bunch of power and data, right? So try to make a very flexible space. Here, here's an example of using lighting and spreading that teaching area around. This is a space over in Lansing that, that we work with one of the science teachers there to use lighting with very simple switching, you know, so not very complicated, but to be able to, to help in the transitions, right? One of the things we talked about was your, your gather in sort of lecture mode, and then you're gonna release the kids to do, to start working on their experiments, right? So how do you help that transition? Okay, we're gonna turn the lights off, or turn these other lights on to attract the students to this, to these other areas and change the focus of a room. So a lot can be done with lighting, that's, that's very powerful for helping students learn. And examples of the hallway that can become a learning space, especially with the technology advancements that, you know, that are coming more and more. When we are looking at York Hall, we were talking about this in regard to these areas that are kind of highlighted in yellow here. These are these, these areas just outside the new large group construction area and, and study hall type meeting space out there. And how can we use these small spaces? They're inside a corridor, but you can do seating, you can do certain things that will allow that corridor to be used as kind of a breakout space for language labs or whatever, however you want to use it. So differentiated spaces, this is looking at, at classrooms in a different way and breaking them up into a series of smaller spaces. A lot of these pictures are from a school visited in Florida that exemplified this, and the students were, you know, have a variety of spaces from, you know, in the bottom of this sort of lectures, self-form, very small group cubbies, you know, small group project areas, other flexible work areas. You can do a lot with furniture, you know, things that can be moved around to provide a variety of smaller spaces. Making your cafeteria work harder is another, another thing, right? Raise your hand if you've worked and eaten at the same time, right? We'll do it. So, and our students, you know, do it as well. So let's provide a space that supports cafeterias, you know, being able to, you know, be great places to eat and hang out and socialize, but also if you're, you know, I mean, I, I was never last minute on any of my assignments and never used my lunch period to complete, say, a paper or something. But, you know, we want to provide facilities that can allow, you know, all learners. The new word for library is media center, right? So libraries have a new stress these days as far as being spaces that encompass everything that, that goes on in a school. Like I have a huge amount of respectful appearance because they, they need to kind of, you know, be able to do often teach a class, teach a lesson, right? Help students find books, help students with technology, often, you know, research is more and more being done, obviously electronically and, and less than physical print form. So that has a big implication on what the, what the facilities look like and what sort of activities they support. And often, you know, very much changing the way they look. This is one where it's gonna be under construction this summer, then in May. Um, you know, there are other ideas about community from, you know, how can you, you know, provide gathering spaces for students that can be used socially, can be used educationally, and can allow students to, you know, flow through them. So, that is a very quick overview of some ideas that we talked about and be thinking about. I'll pause if anyone wants to, to ask any questions before I get into, again, a very quick overview of the status of the many capital projects that are ongoing in various stages.
And I, I don't have any particular questions, just a comment. I, I really liked this overview. I thought it was really interesting to look at it conceptually because how one designs those spaces really makes a difference to how we both move through them and how we communicate within them. So I really like this overlay, I was really intrigued by the lights, you know, the way of kind of incorporating that. In fact, something I've thought about a lot in, in like Enfield, the light quality, I think, can make a difference, you know, whether it's the, you know, the sometimes even with fluorescent lights all day can be really hard on your eyes, you know, just the way those feel. And I really, I, I think one other comment that I think is really important is, not the comments are not important, but it's one of the things that I think matters is flexibility because I know that there have been times in architecture where people have said like, oh, we all want open classrooms, and then, you know, 10 years later, you think, ooh, what were they thinking? So I think the idea that you have, as you rebuild these spaces or redesign these spaces, that you build in the flexibility as new ideas of education evolve would be important to think about.
Yeah, thanks, and one of the things that we'll see about lighting in, in Area K, when, when that's done, we've incorporated, so, you know, lighting generally is LED-based, fluorescents are, yeah, one of the things that LEDs allow you to do sometimes is, is called white light tuning, so if you're, if you know color temperature, you know, you've got your different kinds of bulbs, some feel warmer, some feel cooler, and there's some science behind how humans react to different light temperatures throughout the day, and that adjusting just the light temperature without even turning the lights on or off can really change the mood in the space and help, help focus attention. For example, if you want that, you know, that rowdy study hall to kind of quiet down, you can, you can dial the temperature and, and affect mood significantly. Okay, I'll, I'll get into the various phases of the different capital projects, just as a very quick sort of roundup. This is an image that I tend to come back to, hopefully it's becoming familiar, and these, these vertical lines represent projects. I'll kind of go from completion, some of, some are done and have like sort of fallen off the right end of this, of this image, right? Like, like the Whit bleachers and some other capital reserve projects, like the northeast parking lot that was done the other summer. We're finishing up the Boynton bleacher project, that's, that's pretty much wrapping up. Cindy gave us a great overview on Phase 1, which is, you know, kind of midway through construction. The, there's a significant amount of roofing happening at Ithaca High School. About half of it's getting ripped off and replaced this summer, the next half is summer of 2022. At Boynton into Whit, we have an HVAC-related project that's at the state for review that, that we hope to get back very, we hope to get approval on that very soon, so we can start the construction work on improving the controls, the HVAC control systems in both of those buildings that will help them be able to operate much better and provide better comfort for a lot of the staff and students in there. Phase 2, which is another sort of large project, and I'll go through the, the phasing or the, the, the big elements in that in just a minute. We are literally any day submitting that into the state for their review to tee that up for bidding this coming fall and construction starting summer of 2022, so that, that's moving through the process. Moving to the left of this, we have a facilities evaluation that we're reviewing again as part of our preparation for thinking about Phase 3 and what are important facility infrastructure-related things that, that, that are rising to the top. We're doing another, another capital outlet project, these are these very small projects we do every year. They're limited to $100,000, you get the aid back right away. So we're talking about the next one there, which is at Caroline, and figuring out exactly what the, what the highest needs there are. But following along with what we've done in the last two capital outlet projects, which is removing those, those electrically operated gymnasium divider doors, right? Taking those out, providing walk draw curtains to improve the safety of those and, and allow those educational spaces to, to work in a different way. The, and then finally Phase 3, so we'll talk about that in a moment. Okay, very quick overview, Boynton, there's some, there's a little bit of flooring happening this coming summer. Cindy mentioned the three elementary schools that are having improvements done to their main entrances. As well, there's some paving coming up on the, on the stadium and the outfield turf, the sod that is being replaced at the, at the baseball field out there. If the high school, Area K is the big show this coming summer. We've got obviously some, some areas wrapping up, like the pool. High school roof, just to give you a visual on the areas that we'll be replacing. Moving to Phase 2. The high school includes improvements to bathrooms and G and H, so those are your real, you know, I'll call them workhorse bathrooms that are in those, those, the main areas of the classrooms, and they're desperately in need of an upgrade. So, we've had a lot of conversations about gender-neutral bathrooms in those locations with individual stalls. Both Boynton and Duett, this happens to be a plan of Boynton, but as you all know, they're very similar. Rent, full renovation of the auditoriums in both buildings, improvements to the security entrance so that you, you know, if you're let into the building, you can't just sort of run down the hallway. So getting a little bit more control over just, you know, knowing who's in your building. Some bathroom renovations as well, and importantly, some, some cross corridor doors, which don't sound very exciting, but they allow, they will allow you to separate off different areas of the building, so you can have an event in the evening in the gymnasium, for example, and restrict access to like the rest of the building, right? So there's, there's a security improvement there in both buildings. And, and similar for if you have an event at the theater, you can close off the gymnasium portion of the building. you can close off the gymnasium portion of the building and the classroom portion of the building. So that again, you can have a little bit better control over where people are going inside your building. LACS includes some, some site work. So sorry, these images turned out a little bit small, but this is, this is a site plan. The main building's over here. There's a new basketball court coming in, some accessibility improvements on the pathways that go there and, and some work at the lower playground there. As far as the building goes, we're adding a small addition to, again, improve the entrance and the control that you have over there. Adding some air conditioning to a few places, adding a little vestibule onto the south side of the black box to improve, well, to, to eliminate the, the need to actually physically go outside the building to get backstage, you know? We do live in upstate New York, so we try to, try to treat our performers a little better. So, so we're really excited about the improvements to LACS. At L Sherman and the Wilson Annex, there's largely site work that deals with water. So you've got water rolling down the hills, you've got water coming up from underground, you've got water, water. So a lot of it is, you know, fixing up some grass areas, fixing up some playground areas, doing some paving. So really getting those outdoor spaces in a, in a position where they can manage the water and stay safe for the kids as they're outside. Caroline, we're doing some bathroom renovations as well there to those main bathrooms along the corridor. Enfield, I mentioned the geothermal well field. So this is a site plan and you start on the top left. That, that hatched area is where the well field will go underground to provide heating and cooling for the building. So as part of that, there will be, you know, a bunch of new mechanical equipment throughout the building that will provide in energy to, to heat and cool your space. And you'll be getting rid of a fossil fuel tank that is a propane tank that's underground there. Making some electrical improvements as well. So part of that is really, that came from the, the fact that the current boiler system is just aging out. The, the facilities department has been, done a great job maintaining those, keeping them working. They're just, they're just well past their useful life. So that's what precipitated, precipitated a, a discussion about how to, how to heat and cool the building. At South Hill, there will be some significant changes to the site circulation. So as, if you've ever attempted to drive past the school heading south out of Ithaca, you can attest to the, the traffic issues and there, there are really some, some significant safety concerns there with the traffic backing up. And we actually happen to have been flying our drone and captured you know, someone going into the ongoing, you know, the oncoming lane to get around the half dozen cars that were, that were stacked up there. So adding, we're going to be adding an entrance at the uphill corner, basically to allow, allow parents to come in and have a much, much longer queuing space and get those cars off the street. That is happening in combination with a flipping of the, of the sort of the front door of the school. Right? That's moving over to the west side of the school with a small addition that will house the new main office and, and the secure entrance is part of that. The, the space where the main office is currently will be renovated into a classroom. Okay, so that was a very quick run through, you know, other 15 or 20 million dollars worth of construction, a lot more details than that, but just wanted to give you a high level overview and get to sort of the, the planning discussion.
Yeah, Chris, I know, I appreciate the, well, the quick run through, but there's a lot in phase two. I had probably almost had forgotten some of what was encompassed within phase two, but that is over. Phase two is over two summers, starting, right, starting in 2021 or is it 2022?
Starting in 2022 and summer of 2023 and a little bit of the school year at select buildings in between, just to get all the work done.
Right. And we always have to try to keep in, well, I always have to try to keep in my mind, which budget year are we talking about? The one we're in, the one we're planning on or, and also which, which building year are we talking about? But it is over two summers. But yeah, this is, there's a lot starting in 2022. Really able to pack a lot into, well, approximately, you know, that 20, $22 million number. And so as we look forward, you know, we're looking at, you know, approximately 50 million of construction dollars to spend over phase three and four, which is, you know, those are out years. And so how best to, you know, what is the highest best use for those? You know, that 50 million, there's incidentals, we're not, you know, that further on down the line, but, you know, thinking again, 50 million. What can we do with that? And part of it is going to be, you know, facility evaluation and, and the building condition survey and what we really should do on some things. But, you know, eventually going to get into what we need to do today, just a little bit. But over a period of time, it's incumbent on us to come up with what are, what are the innovations we want to introduce to the, to the district? You know, for phase three and four. So, so go ahead, Chris, and just, but thanks for the roundup on phase two.
Yeah, hopefully we don't have whiplash. We're, we're zipping around the district. But following on what you said, Rob, one of the, the reasons we've, we've conceived of the phases in roughly 20 million dollar chunks, you know, plus or minus is that, you know, you can, you can just about fit them into two summers. We don't want to go to three summers because that kind of, that puts, that puts construction really far out in the future. And, you know, as we are always checking in on the financing, you know, early on with, with fiscal advisors and with Amanda, that, that sort of general rule of thumb of 10 million a year ish, right? So these are very high level, you know, ideas at the moment to try to figure out what, you know, what does the next phase look like? How big should it be and what's in it, right? So one of the things we start with is, you know, sort of from a technical side, what are those, you know, what are those infield boiler rooms that they're just like this, this, we got to take care of this thing because we're, we're, we're keeping it going, but you know, we got to really take care of this for, for a, an upcoming heating season, for example. So, you know, we, we went throughout the district. You know, million square feet, 260 acres. You guys have, have a fair amount of expanse to cover. And totaling these up and some of you have been through, you know, this, this detailed line by line, you know, review of all the, the observations that we've made and, and the the comments from, from Paul Alexander as well. We've, we sat and gone through all these because there's some things that we just, you know, don't see necessarily. So interviewing your staff is really important to get some of that stuff in here as well. So this, this develops a, you know, like a shopping list, if you will. And, you know, we go in and we prioritize things and we, you know, start to figure out what, you know, what, what rises to the top, what are these priorities? So when we sat and we did this, we started with, you know, assigning a priority one to anything that is sort of related to health and safety, right? As a starting point. So that involves ventilation, that involves code, you know, building code and accessibility code upgrades. You know, that, that I'll call pre-existing non-conformances that are, are things that you don't necessarily have to fix, but that, you know, do not meet the current code. There's some, you know, obviously in, in schools across the state, there's asbestos in a lot of places. So looking at just those areas where really primarily where you have asbestos containing flooring that's starting to, you know, be damaged more than just sort of normal wear pattern. And, you know, when you're prioritizing those things. I mentioned accessibility through the Americans with Disabilities Act, which is a, which is a law. And general deterioration. And that's a very general term, you know, as, you know, I think Rob says, you know, every year, you know, everything just got a year older, right? So you have a lot of square footage, things aging out. So when we look at those, just very high level things, obviously it's, the point of the slide is just to say there's more than, you know, you want to do in phase three and probably between phase three and phase four. And that is typical of schools across the state, right? So there's always more to do than, than you have money to do. So, but what we, what we want to bring to it is, okay, here are some priorities of things that you can then select, select from and, and plan for those things as we move forward. So there's an infrastructure priorities. And when we looked at that, you know, the infield roof, you know, typically of the state of your roofing throughout the district, you did a lot of roofing back in your, in your previous phases. It's end of its warranty and roofs are starting to fail. So we talked to Tim, I'm forgetting his last name, but one of, one of Paul's staff who is very familiar with the, the roofs and as well as our knowledge and historical knowledge. And additionally, you're getting some roof scanning done. So you might see people on, on top of buildings here and there to, and that's a sort of a leak detection thing. So we're always looking at roofing. It's just the basic nuts and bolts thing. And infield roof is the one that's next up based on leaks that you're seeing that jives with the age, it jives with, you know, what, what we would expect as far as as roofing. The, the HVAC at Ithaca High School has been talked about several times. There is, there, there is a collection of controls systems at that building from, from different manufacturers and different kinds of systems that should be cleaned up to provide the best operation for, for the building. There's efficiency there as well. Looking at bringing a lake source cooling to buildings G and H, right? Which do not have cooling now, and that's where your classrooms are. That's where a lot of your teaching happens. And, and there, there are a lot of, you know, different units, unit ventilators and things like that included in, in what could be selected for mechanical system improvements at the high school. The windows at BJM are another thing that's been talked about, you know, you know, several times. And that's just a functioning of the windows that are aging out and being able to open and close them, them well by teachers, staff to be able to operate those. So just a couple, you know, really high level things. There's obviously quite, quite a list of that. We also, it's important, you know, every time, and we hear this more and more to always be addressing educational priorities and what the students can be, how the, how the facility can support the students in, you know, pursuing opportunities, expanding what they can do, strengthening what your, your amazing staff can do with the building to teach your students. So STEM is something that, that rose to the top, obviously at the high school and, and other, and Boynton to Whit. Your, your spaces are, you know, aging out and, you know, need some help to bring them despite the amazing things that your, you know, code red and a lot of your other, you know, programs achieve. You know, those spaces really could be doing more for you. Media centers, we talked about a little bit and cafeterias and kitchens, right? So that's, that is some of the ideas that rose to the top. This image on the right is a suggestion of an idea that's been discussed at the high school that would encompass media center renovation. The, the STEM area renovations to the shops that are up near the top of that, that's for yellow highlighted area. A lot of that curriculum happens. And integrating the district office into this. So, you know, there's, there are ways that that you could embed some of your, your leadership that, that, I mean, I'm not making this up. This is coming from, from the leadership team embedding them within the high school and then being able to push some, you know, aid from the state generating classroom space into the district office, connecting that to the high school. So, you know, the perception is not that this is, you know, its own separate building and like, you don't go in there, right? The, the administration is spread throughout, it's more accessible. And that building then can be used for, you know, some, some classroom uses or some educational uses. So there's a, there's a big idea there that encompasses a few things that that we've talked about, you know, in a couple of meetings now. So wanted to just encourage folks to chime in at this point. This was intended as something to, you know, to present this to and I don't know anyone else wants to, to jump on with some of the conversations that have been had.
Amanda, do you want to just talk about, and for Anne's sake, just talk about what, you know, you, you all have met about that meeting, the exec team has met about, okay, turning the quote board building or administration building and turning that into educational space. So, so what's the thought and how would that look? And then Anne, I know wants to probably weigh in.
Yeah. I, you know, I, I think that's been a conversation for a while now. I think that, you know, I think Chris really kind of said it nicely that there's this vision of trying to incorporate, you know, the work that, that, and the good people that are in our building that we often don't get to see kids and kids don't get to see us. Like there's some fluidity that would really, I think, be valuable for, for just the district in, as a whole. And then also to think about the utilization of spaces in a more creative way, right? There shouldn't just be like, this is an adult space. This is a kid's space. You know, the opportunity to be able to have a, a meeting room or a conference room that can also, you know, serve a classroom or have, you know, joint conversations and, and again, have that opportunity to blend would be great in terms of just the, the, where it is on the map, right? It makes a lot of sense because we are so close to the STEM lab and sort of that, you know, the studio that they've created. And so how can we be thinking as a district to be able to blend those spaces and again, have that opportunity to learn from each other, right? The adults and students more than just the teachers, right? Like the, the administrators as well. So I think those are the, a few of the thoughts. And, you know, Chris said the magic word. Anytime we can convert a building to Adbell, right? Where now all of a sudden we have the opportunity to educate young people within that space. You can then generate aid on those spaces if they're, you know, adult occupied. Like a district office building, that is something that every dollar we spend, it is every dollar of a taxpayer dollar, right? We don't get state aid back on that. So those are all things that are just ways to, to think creatively. But Anne, I'm, you know.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, I think it's a great idea. I think it's another example of using the building conceptually. You know, it's like making it not just, you know, making the, I, I think it addresses a fundamental problem that people sort of see central administration as something separate. It's like, it's this, and then the building being a separate building embodies that separateness. It's like, you're like, all like stuck in this one little spot. And yet you're completely integral to the functioning of the district. And so in addition to the fact that it'd be great that you could tap into kind of state aid, I just think on a conceptual level, it's great. Plus the board room, you know, where you have the, where the board meeting are, it's, it doesn't even work all that well for board meetings. It, it, you know, it doesn't, just the way in which it's organized and the way the board has got their back to half the people that are watching there. So it's like even that, and the idea that you could use it for classroom space. It seems like it probably spends a lot of time just empty, which is crazy. So yeah, I think that sounds like a really interesting idea. This is completely unrelated to that, but it's something I didn't hear you bring up as you're talking in conceptual terms. There is a lot of conversation at the city level about green building codes and things like that. And that is something that I don't see a lens of that going through this. And I'm wondering if that's something you're starting to think about because I think there'll be pressures on the school district to start. You know, you know, especially like as we replace roofs, you know, like it's back to that kind of decision tree. You know, you know, we, you know, that's why the infield project with, is so great to see with the, the heating system. But I mean, I just think that's like another lens of questions that would be, as you rethink, infrastructure should be applied to the process.
Other, other thoughts, questions?
I, I'd like to say, I haven't been able to be at one of these meetings in so long. And it was nice to hear you mention neurodiversity. You know, so often we think accessibility and we think wheelchairs, but it's so much more than that. So to know that you're considering that with acoustics, with lighting, with all the things. So to know that you're considering that with acoustics, with lighting, with all the things. I'm really, I'm really glad to hear that.
So we don't have, right, we don't have a full full board tonight, of course, but. But appreciate the, well, the introduction and then starting to conceptualize some of these. But Chris, I mean, certainly in the past, we've gone for lead certification, you know, LACS, the the main. Large edition there. Certainly, it's front of mind to be, especially when we're doing additions, is to make ensure that they're. With the most efficient, up to date. Products and buildings that we can make, right? I mean, where are we on leads, all that consideration as we are?
Yeah, yeah, it it's something that, you know, we're always thinking about, something that we've talked about at, you know, some OACM meetings and and there are a lot of ways. Into sustainability. You can approach it from a sort of energy use standpoint. You can approach it from an occupant health standpoint. You can look at, you know, waste stream analysis, you know, you can look at all these things. And so that's. You know, we've talked a little bit about trying to establish a a larger. District mission statement around sustainability and kind of thinking around what what the goals are, what the priorities are, because there. Really are a lot of different aspects that that you could focus on. Certainly, you know, as Ann said, the the geothermal well field that end field is a significant. Infrastructure upgrade that is very much in tune with 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 providing modern green infrastructure for facilities. We've looked at, you know, rainwater harvesting and some other things along the way and and and, you know, looking at ideas about how to how to integrate. Sustainability aspects as we're going through and renovating, you know, an area here, an area there. In area K, for example, we we added some skylights, trying to get some natural lighting in there, added some lighting, some some. Fancy lighting that I that I mentioned earlier that. So, yeah, it it's always, it's always something that we're looking at when when you're looking at mechanical systems as well. Anytime you modernize a mechanical system, you're going to see benefits just because of the equipment and the controls and and what can be done with mechanical systems. That's a huge thing that so, you know, we're always looking at that and, you know, welcome. Welcome, new thinking about about where you want to push the envelope.
Well, thanks, Chris. And for the for the STEM piece, you know, that. That is a high priority, I think, on our, for our innovation of educational spaces. So. When we're looking at integrating L building, meaning the administration building, the current administration building, are we looking at truly, you know, a physical connection with. The library and and taking that opportunity to reimagine the library space a bit as long with, you know. Our e-building functions, it's really, it's really whatever, wherever things lead us, but. But are you, are we considering going ahead and physically connecting L building to the rest of the campus?
That's a good question, Rob. But if you're if you're going to get aid on L building, I think it needs to physically be connected to the high school. So. Yeah, probably. This is very, that very, very high level. So there are a lot of conversations that that need to happen. For example, you know, are we going to like? Like we did to connect area C and Q, right? You added that hallway on the outside there to link those two together. So are we looking at, you know, adding a hallway or adding something more than a hallway to connect? You know, these parts of the building so that you don't have to, you know, essentially go through the cafeteria to get to a different part of the building like you do now. Or are we, you know, it's it's really, it's really relatively early in the process and we need to have some more conversations about. What the needs are, what the costs are, you know, what the benefits are. And and what the ideas are, I think, that, you know, the way the the state. Funds projects, we want to be savvy about that as well. And if we're going to be adding, you know, any significant amount of space, we need to do the work to be sure that that's going to. Going to make sense from a financial standpoint as well. And and review that that involves a review of your whole high school campus and the student, you know. The student enrollment and and all the spaces and stuff there. So it's early days and there are some. You know, some high level studies that we need to do to kind of figure out what what. Were there synergies between improving educational space, adding educational space, doing it a financial financially, you know, responsible way, you know, and and somehow linking up. A new building and joining two into one. So. We're we're open for ideas and we're we're developing some as well. So the next time that we come together, we. You know, can hopefully bring some something more specific.
Right, and to the to the point and, you know, I think we we probably will go ahead and get a GAC update here and we'll let people. Take off on this nice spring night, but. The. We're at the point now where, you know, wrapping up, you know, phase one, you know, yes, we're, there are still projects that aren't quite finished, but they will be. Phase two is pretty much in the books now, what we're going to do, a lot of work lined up. And so, yeah, we will get to that and we'll monitor that. But, you know, I would, I would think that, you know, we would want to spend a fair amount of our. Our facilities work sessions on, you know, on brainstorming and really, you know, thinking about phase three and. Because the years do, well, time does move forward and we do need to be in at a place to go. With some final decisions and design development, so we can go to the state so we can line, right, line up that that next. That next group that has to go to the state for approval. So but there is a time schedule and so. We talked about early stages and and timing. Yes, indeed, but we're not talking, we can't talk about this for the next eighteen months, right, Chris? We actually, it's the calendar would. Be pushing us a bit sooner, correct? Just to get, make that clear.
Yeah, yeah. So if we're if we're to work backwards from starting construction, say, in spring of twenty twenty four, right? Work backwards, we need to get that into the state, you know, probably in the summer of twenty twenty three, which means we need to start designing that like. A year early, like the summer of twenty twenty two or even this this coming spring. So, you know, that give, we're in a good schedule time, you know, we have some months to to think about this and. Iterate on what makes the most sense for this project and and hone it and craft it before we really need to get going. But, you know, six months can go by pretty quickly. So, yeah, it's it's the perfect time to start conversations about it.
No, very good. Anyone else just want to weigh in now and we'll, but lots to think about and but we'll. We'll have an opportunity to meet again. So but it is, well, it's almost June. So, yeah, so we. But yes, it's, there's lots going on. We appreciate all the all the work and the progress and. Amanda, you just want to wrap up the GAC update. Chris, thank you. Thanks, Cindy, for all your work and Paul, et cetera, everyone. But, you know, things move on. Yeah, we had a budget vote, but yeah, we're already. It's like kind of a letdown because it's, you know, yeah, okay, thank you, everyone, but we, there's lots of work to do, so.
I just want to add that it's so it's so amazing that we're at a point now where we're thinking about continuing to make the student centered centered district, even to the point of. The areas you laid out, Chris, by which we can support students' mental health. And the social learning. I mean, yes, this this is brilliant. So using industrial spaces. We're stuck with them, quote unquote, right? Does it mean we can continue to think outside or think inside the box? And using those bottom things. So all those things are laid. Some of the issues we know we have to deal with, special education. No diverse kids. So it's just wonderful to see how that looks in reality. So thanks for that update. Not my area of expertise. I've learned a lot. Thanks.
Thanks, A. Anyone else before we just hop to GAC? Go ahead, Amanda.
Very brief update. We're not quite ready to present to you the official swap for the GAC gym. That would be moving on to the Beverly J Martin Playground Garden area. There was a couple of proposals back and forth, one of which was the gravel, the base of the gravel driveway that's on Cornell Street up by Bell Sherman. Paul's on and I can just see he could probably give a nod. We already take care of that, even though it's sort of city property and it's, you know. We said, gee, it would be great if it could be something that's like kid related. So we're actually right now just sort of in conversation about perhaps a mid-block raised. Walkway, a sort of a pedestrian pathway that would connect sort of the where GAC faces over to where the basketball ball courts are and the softball field and the parking lot over there and the pool. And then the back of the Beverly J Martin Playground to be able to have a safer opportunity for kids to walk. So. That that seemed to be something that people felt really good about, so that would be like a traffic slowdown measure. And then allow for young people to be able to access more green space when there will be less green space on their actual playground. So that's where we are right now. Things are moving forward as the board authorized Kate Reed, the school district's attorney, to work with the city's attorney. So that's where they are. So as we get more, we'll keep coming back to you, okay?
Oh, thanks, Amanda. You know, a true, a traffic hump, not a traffic bump, you know, wide with very distinct. Crossing area and really controlling traffic. That would be great, you know, definitely. And others, anything? Chris, you okay? Everybody?
I'm good.
So, man, do we have to set up the gender setting topics or anything? Can we, can we go home? Lily, Amanda, can we do that?
Lily says yes.
Well, well, how about I send you all some ideas and we'll go from there?
Good.
All right, that's, that sounds good. A joint meeting, Chris, and we pulled it off and it's six fifty eight or something. And so I think everybody should probably take off and. Enjoy the evening, right, Chris?
I agree.
Thanks, Chris, as always. Thanks, everyone.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night, all.